Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of your Westland City Council order. Before we begin with the pledge, just to note, our Tigers won three to nothing, so I'm sure we're all excited about that. But we will begin tonight's meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Pro Tem Melissa Sampe.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Pro Tem. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Bowman.
Present.
Councilman Hart.
Here.
Councilman Hornbuckle.
Here.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
Present.
Councilman Wishart.
Here.
Pro Tem Sampe.
Here.
President McDermott.
Here.
Encore, Ms. President.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. All right, we do have a special announcement and presentation tonight. We will be hearing from Vic Barrow, the head of the Wayne Ford Civic League, as he will tell us about the wonderful Veterans Holiday Meal Program and the wonderful work they're doing there. Vic, floor's yours.
Well, there's a lot of information to cover, and I don't want to tie up council's valuable time, so I went ahead and wrote it out, so I will be reading from some of this. Greetings, Council, Vic Barrow, President of the Civic League, and a thank you to the Council President for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm here to talk about our 11th Annual Veteran Meal Program. Fast, in 2013, I started this program with former State Representative Bob Kozowski, where we registered 30 Wayne and Westland veterans to receive a frozen turkey. That was the beginning of what is now, fast forward to 2023, and we were able to register just under 400 veterans, surviving spouses of veterans, whom we believe also served, and families of active-duty service members serving abroad. Three weeks ago, we mailed out information packets with registration forms to get the ball rolling, and as of today, Council, we have 215 veterans and families that have registered for this year's program. Our hope is that we will exceed last year's number, and we look forward to meeting more of our local heroes. To those veterans that are curious about how to participate in this year's program, they can learn about and register the program in several ways. They can register online by going to Wayne-Ford.com/2024-veteran-meal-registration, and they can fill out their application right there online. They will have to fill in all the fields so that they can submit the form. It's like most webpages where you register for things, you need to put in all the information. Or they can call my office at 734-728-5010, or reach out to your favorite Wayne or Westland Council person, and they will be happy to assist you with this, as everybody is on board 100%, and that's much appreciated. Donations are always appreciated, and this program is funded through kindness and generosity of others. If you would like to donate to this year's effort, you can do so online through a secured portal at Wayne-Ford.com/veteran-program-donation, and select any amount you're comfortable with. We didn't put in specified radio fields where people had to select this amount or that amount. If they got $2 and they want to donate, that's fine. We'll be happy to take it and support our veterans with that. I do want to take a brief moment, Council President, with your permission, to acknowledge some of this year's sponsors.
Please do.
Who have also been part of the program in the past. We reached out to them as well. We have a couple of new ones. We have Encore Real Estate Development Company has joined us through Mr... Oh, I'll get to them. Wayne 100 Club came through again this year. Funeral Home is a new sponsor this year, and Mayor Racy was able to secure a commitment from them, and we received their check. Brandon Qassab, who is the owner of the previous real estate firm that I acknowledged, he joined us this year. We have UAW Local 900 is on board. Solely Building Company, along with Independent Carpet One, previous year's sponsors. Mr. Jeff Steiers from Arrow Industries, he's our boxing champion that built the Norway Boxing Gym and became a very successful businessman in our community, and he's donated to our program. We have OHM came on board this year, and one of my favorites, and an old-time friend, Glenn Shaw Family Foundation came through this year with a donation as well. Climate Technologies, I know they're the city environmental controls contractor, they joined us. And we've reached out to many others to get on board, because this is about veterans. This is not about anything other than taking care of our local heroes. We need all the support that we can get. I got a call from the Westland Firefighters today. They're donating, and Westland Police Officers Association has already submitted a donation to us, and it's kind of funny, because we kind of go back and forth with our donations. We support police and fire, and they support our Veteran Meal Program, so it's kind of fun the way that works. And I'd like to close by asking or inviting Mayor Coleman to join this year's event as my personal guest. So if you would please extend that invitation to him, I would welcome a phone call from the mayor if he'd like to give me a ring. But this has always been about the veterans. They're entitled to know who their leaders are, which is why I've always invited the mayor and council and other people to this event, and I think it's important. We've done a lot together over the years, and we continue to get better and better every year. So thank you, Mr. Clerk. Obviously, you and I have known each other 20-plus years. You are always welcome in my house. Thank you. Have a blessed day. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barrow, and thank you for all the work, the wonderful work you do in the community. Okay, we will now move on to questions or input on the agenda from the public. This section will allow members of the public at the beginning of the meeting to address the council regarding items that are on tonight's agenda. Questions asked may be responded to during the agenda item following a motion and support from your Westland City Council. Is there anyone on my right? Anyone on my left? Yes, Ms. Warren?
Good evening, Council and Deputy Mayor. This evening, I'm asking for your support on the agenda this evening. We do have the contributions to Norway Citizens Council of $10,000. We do put on many events within Norway. We service anywhere from 300 to 500 families at our events. We have our Valentine's Family Event, which, if you ever get to attend that, I highly encourage it, because all the families dress up. It's a great time. We have our Resource Fair that we bring in. We have our Back to School Event, where we get over 200 to 300 families' backpacks and all of their needs to start the school year off right. We have resources available for them there as well. We have our Harvest Festival coming up on the 19th. Again, we get 300 to 500. We get a lot of people from Westland, not just Norway, but it's nice to be able to bring these events to the families, bring these resources to the families, and for them to have a nice evening, day, afternoon spending time with their families. We also have our Holiday Tree Lighting Event, which we all know is a great time. So, like everything, the price of everything's gone up, so it just makes it, you know, this gives us some breathing room to be able to hold these events. We have a great group of volunteers that volunteer their time to put on these events, and we always have great community support. So, again, asking your support this evening in supporting that. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone on my right? Anyone else on my left? Yes.
Good evening, Ruth Dale. A question on Consent Calendar, Item F. Sounds very interesting. We have a grant for firefighter turnout gear, and if somebody, anyone could explain what that is, it sounds interesting and needed, and we got a good grant here. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dale. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak? Yes, Mr. Warren.
It's good evening. Item I under the Consent Calendar. It's my understanding that these materials that are proposed to come here, these radioactive materials, are leftovers from the Manhattan Project, from the greatest generation who won the war. And without those two bombs, Fat Boy and Little Man, I guess maybe Japan never would have surrendered. But my main question is that, if not here, then where do we want to send it? We're seeking relief from here, and then they offer to send it somewhere else, and they send it here. It's just a question that, these are things that are left over from over 70 years ago, and now it's come back to haunt us, in one way or some other community. So I don't know what kind of relief that we're seeking, just seeking relief. So I just need some little definition of what type of relief are these communities seeking, to send it to somebody else and be unfair to them, or whatever. But so it's kind of interesting that there are a lot of things that are left over from World War II to Vietnam, or Agent Orange and everything else that we're seeking relief from. But this is interesting to see what happens to these materials, because I believe that Republic probably already has a contract with them, and you probably want to void that out. So it's kind of interesting, because I know that some other cases of waste from everywhere else that went all the way to the Supreme Court, and the Supreme Court ruled that you can't stop interstate commerce. So it's very interesting to see how this turns out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak? Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak? All right, hearing and seeing none, we will move on to the Consent Calendar. Is there a motion?
Some.
There's a motion by Councilwoman Rakowski, supported by Councilman Wishart. Are there any changes to the Consent Calendar? Any changes? Yes, Councilwoman Bowman.
I'd like to move Item G, zoning ordinance, to New Business.
Is there support? There is a motion by Councilwoman Bowman to move Item G to New Business, supported by Councilman Wishart. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Council President?
Yes.
I believe you have other changes.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I have changes. Thank you.
Yes.
Are we doing them individually, or can we do them as a?
We can do them as a block. That's fine.
Okay. I'd like to move Item F.
Item F and?
I'm going to move Item I to be addressed by the administration, since it was brought up for questions.
Great. So the motion on the floor is to move Items G, F, and I to New Business. It was made by Councilwoman Rakowski, supported by Councilman Wishart, and?
Councilwoman Bowman.
Excuse me, Councilwoman Bowman. Apologize about that. All right, are there any other changes to the Consent Calendar? Any other changes to the Consent Calendar? Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Bowman.
Yes.
Councilman Hart.
Yes.
Councilman Hornbuckle.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
Yes.
Councilman Wishart.
Yes.
Pro Tem Sampe.
Yes.
President McDermott.
Yes. Now, back to the original motion for the Consent Calendar. There are no additional changes to the Consent Calendar. No additional changes to the Consent Calendar? Hearing and seeing none, motion passes as amended.
One moment. Council has approved the following Consent Calendar items: minutes of the regular meeting and minutes of the closed study session both held September 16, 2024; approval of purchase of a federal commander digital system for citywide ciberance from Westshore Services Incorporated in a total amount not to exceed $1, rather $15,114; approval of extension of the existing advanced metering infrastructure agreement between the City of Westland and Census USA Incorporated for water meter management and billing obligations. Terms of the extension shall be effective October 27, 2024, and valid for an additional five-year period. Hosting fees associated with this agreement shall not exceed $60,000 per year. Approval of contract with Brain Media Technology for management of the Jefferson Barnes Learning Lab in an amount of $60,120. Adoption, rather, last item approved on the Consent Calendar today: adoption of the prepared resolution authorizing the development agreement between the City of Westland and Liberator Development Group to use 2024-2025 home funds in the amount of $43,040 to build and/or rehabilitate the property of 2203 and 2207 Emerson. The mayor and clerk are authorized to sign the development agreement, and the Director of Housing and Community Development to sign all other documents on behalf of the city related to the construction and sale of the properties to eligible homebuyers upon completion of the projects. Moving to payment of voucher.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
There's a motion by Councilman Hornbuckle, supported by?
Sure, me.
Oh, I thought I heard you. I'm sorry. Councilwoman Rakowski, is there any comments from the maker? Any comments from the supporter? Is there any additional comments from the council? Any additional comments?
Any dissent?
Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, motion passes.
New Business, Item 1: Confirmation of Appointment of Timothy Bailey to the William P. Faust Public Library of Westland Board for a five-year term, effective upon confirmation, and to expire October 7, 2029.
It's a motion by Councilwoman Bowman, supported by Councilman Wishart. Did the administration have anything that they wanted to add?
Just that Mr. Bailey's been active in the community for years and would make a great fit on the library board.
Okay. Thank you, Chief Staff. Are there any comments from the maker? Any comments from the supporter? Any additional discussion from the council? Any discussion from the council?
Is the individual here?
Is the individual, is Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Yes. Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, motion passes. Please stand and be recognized.
New Business, Item 1A, formerly known as Consent Item G: Introduction of the Updated Zoning Ordinance 248. This ordinance would replace the current zoning ordinance in its entirety pursuant to the process set forth in the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act.
Is there a motion? Motion by Councilwoman Bowman, is there support?
Support.
Supported by Councilman Hart. Did the administration have any comments?
I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay.
I just, my main reason for moving it is it's an introduction, and I just feel that should be on New Business for introducing. I know my understanding is that it will be on the, it will be voted on for approval later times. So I don't know if anyone has been, you know, is anyone else in the City of Westland that has questions on it, but I think that this gives us some time to also have those questions. I know there has been some study sessions and things like that, but I'm just encouraging people in Westland to just take a look at this, because it does, it is important for us to get feedback as well. So other than that, I really don't have any questions right at this time.
Okay. Are there any questions from the supporter? Okay, are there any additional questions from the council? Any additional discussion from the council? Mo, can you just give a brief idea of one, just a brief overview to the general public of, you know, kind of what this item entails and what's going to be the next step in the process?
Sure. Thank you. This has been an 18-month-long process to update the city's zoning ordinance. The zoning ordinance is the development code for the city, basically regulating all, not only just new developments, but additions and renovations, and also reoccupancies to vacant structures. There's a reason why 80% of our city is single-family, and a reason why industrial areas are industrial, and why some areas in the city are commercial. And that's because of the zoning ordinance. It also regulates things such as height, setbacks from property lines, and how much green space you're required to have, how much parking you're required to have. Our zoning ordinance has not been updated in 20-plus, maybe close to 30 years, so this is a total rewrite, modernization, and overhaul of the city's development code. Basically, there have been maybe close to eight public meetings throughout the past 18 months. I know two of the council members were not here, so we met with them one-on-one, and also had a study session about a month ago. October 21st, you will be seeing the final adoption agenda item, and the Planning Commission took this up a couple months ago at a public hearing, too, that was noticed in the paper on the city's website, and things like that, according to, again, the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act. I have Adam Young here from Waitrim, if you can just give him a hand. He's been a focal point in helping us rewrite this, as was our steering committee, which was made up of city staff, city volunteers that sit on our commissions, and a couple council members as well. Again, happy to answer any questions you have, and thank you for your support on this throughout the past 18 months.
Thank you, Director Ayub. Any additional discussion from the council? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, motion passes.
New Business, Item 1B, formerly known as Consent F: Approval of the 2024 firefighter turnout gear grant from the Department of Labor and Economic Growth for gear 77 sets of turnout gear in a total amount not to exceed $276,461.
There is a motion by Councilwoman Rakowski, supported by Councilman Hart. Is there any discussion from the?
Thank you, Council President. First of all, I think it's important that we highlight something that our firefighters need desperately, and this has been a long-term project between the state and the fire department. But perhaps more importantly, as we had Ms. Ruth Dale ask a question about the grant and highlighting it, so I just wanted to bring it to the forefront, since she asked kindly to know what the grant entailed, and, you know, to further explain the expenditure, too, for our public, so that they understand what the city is putting forth for the grant.
Absolutely.
And if we may, also have from the fire department, through the chair.
Sure.
I know what turnout gear is, but maybe if you could give us, the public, a brief explanation of what turnout gear is.
Through the chair, the turnout gear that is funded by the state's going to be a turnout coat, or the coat that our firefighters will wear, and the pants and suspenders that they wear, and a set of boots. The additional, the additional turnout gear will allow our firefighters to be able to come back and wash a set of gear and have an extra set. Through my career, I've had five of our firefighters come down with cancer, the job-related, including prostate, brain cancer, and melanoma, and this is just one step in moving forward and making sure that our firefighters are safe and that we have clean gear to put on.
Any other discussion, Councilwoman? All righty. Any discussion from the supporter?
No, sir.
Actually, there was a question in mind that didn't get addressed, and it wouldn't be through the fire department, it'd be through finance.
Yes, please do.
We're not exceeding $276,000, sorry, $461,000, and I think the public would like to know if that is our expenditure, what the grant total is, and if there's a match or not, just so that it's transparent.
Yeah. This is the administration. Devin?
Thank you. Through the chair, it's a zero cost to the city. It's all completely funded through the state of Michigan Labor and Department of Economic Growth. It's a complete, full expenditure of the 276 will come from the state. Thank you.
Thank you.
Also, any additional discussion from the council?
I do have just one point that I want to make. I want to thank my colleague, Councilwoman Rakowski. This was a long time coming. The state had actually, what, probably two years ago, allocated funds for this, and it's been a while that we've been waiting to get this money. I know that you've been, you know, pushing and advocating, where's the gear? When are we going to get it? When are cities going to be able to, you know, take possession of this? So just want to thank her for, you know, her advocacy on this, and, you know, thank our partners in the state for passing this, even though we got it a little later than we probably would have liked to. I think our firefighters are going to, you know, very much appreciate this, and firefighters all across the state. Any additional discussion from the council? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, motion passes unanimously.
New Business, Item 1C, formerly known as Consent I: Adoption of Prepared Resolution Authorizing the City of Westland to Enter Into an Intergovernmental Litigation Effort Against Republic Services with a Coalition of Local Communities Seeking Injunctive Relief from the Acceptance of Radioactive Waste Materials.
Some.
Support.
There is a motion by Pro Tem Sampe, supported by Councilwoman Rakowski, and it looks like you, is discussion from the maker?
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you so much, Mr. Warren, for bringing this up. A lot of times when we have items on the Consent Calendar, they don't fully explain what they are. So I'll just ask this question through the chair to the administration, whoever would like to take it. Maybe if you could give a little background on what this is and what it entails from the city, what is needed.
Yeah, I'm going to let Mr. McNamara give the explanation about the lawsuit, but this came from the Conference of Western Wayne in support of the communities that are in a lawsuit currently that have an injunction filed. But I'll let Mr. McNamara explain the lawsuit.
If I may, through the chair? Yes.
This is a request to join other local communities, Van Buren, Canton, Romulus, that filed a civil lawsuit in Wayne County Circuit Court in an attempt to stop the disposal or the trucking into Wayne County of nuclear waste or byproducts that was generated during World War II. When the communities became aware that this was scheduled- When the communities became aware that this was scheduled to happen, a lawsuit was filed seeking what's called a temporary restraining order. The Wayne County Circuit Judge granted that restraining order. So right now, the landfill and the transportation companies are not able to bring that waste into the local community. However, the judge has scheduled a hearing, which is essentially the trial in this matter, to see if that restraining order will stay in place or if it will be removed. So.
Thank you. I think that gives a further explanation for those that are in the audience and obviously watching at home, but I would just ask if there's any other questions, if you stay, anyone in the audience that wants to ask questions about this? If that's okay, just free to hang around for a minute. Okay, perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you Pro Tem. Any discussion from the supporter?
Yes, thank you briefly. During public comment on the agenda, Mr. Warren did bring up something that I think is important and it's, we're asking for relief and he was like, but what exactly, what relief do we want? And, you know, one thing that he did say that I think is very important for us to recognize is, oh, of course, we don't want nuclear waste in our cities or the surrounding communities, but he asked, okay, so do we just move it on down the road? And I think what I would like to know, and I don't think there's an answer that Mr. McNamara can give us, because while he's a very intelligent man, I don't think he's a nuclear physicist. So although it may be 70 years old, I do believe the half-life is a little bit longer than 70 years for most of that, those materials. But, you know, I think what we really need to be asking is, you know, as we look at our environment and all the additional types of contaminants, would be to ask the, really the federal government and those who created these weapons to do the right thing and know how to actually dispose of them so that they're not contaminants and that they're not endangering anybody else's life. And, you know, I'm not sure of the necessity of moving them at this point in time because where they are currently is probably already contaminated. So now we're just spreading contamination, which to me seems foolish and wasteful. So I agree with you, Mr. Warren. Thank you for bringing that up. It doesn't need to be passed on down the road and it certainly doesn't need to go here. But we are each other's neighbors, so we really should be advocating for the proper disposal of these materials wherever they may land. And that's just, just wanted to make that comment and recognize Mr. Warren for his thoughtfulness.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Is there any additional discussion from the council? Any additional discussion? I do have one point. I want to thank my colleague for moving this on to new business so we can talk about this and thank you, Councilwoman Rakowski, for your point as well. Michigan, if you've paid attention to the news for a number of years, and back when he was probably State Representative LeBlanc and not Clerk LeBlanc, was the subject of a lot of consternation around the Canadian garbage coming here into the state and Michigan being used as a dumping ground for waste and garbage and refuse from Canada. So we have a history in our state of being other people's dumping ground for waste and materials. This is far more serious than just what Canada was sending across the border in terms of trying to dump their garbage. While there may be toxic materials in garbage, waste, nuclear, and potentially still radioactive materials, as my colleague mentioned, even if they consider that shelf life to be, you know, expired in 70 years, is it really? So we have been other people's dumping ground before and I think it's important that as a state, especially a state that is home to so much precious natural resource and waterways, even in the metro Detroit area, when we talk about all of our inland lakes, we talk about the Rouge River Tributary, the Detroit River, we cannot allow ourselves to continue to be abused as somebody else's dumping ground. So I thank each of my colleagues for, you know, supporting this, for the administration, for getting this on the agenda, and for all the communities across metro Detroit here in Western Wayne County in particular, who are standing up and saying enough is enough with being other states' dumping ground. I'm sure that at a council meeting in New York, if they were trying to bury the waste there around where this facility is at, they'd be having the same resolution because they wouldn't want it set in stone in their backyard either. So thank you to each of my colleagues, thank you to the administration, and all the other communities who joined in on this. I think it's really important to stand up and say enough is enough. Is there any dissent on this? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, motion passes unanimously.
New business. Item 2. Confirmation of Appointment of Lakeisha Maxwell to the Economic Development Corporation Tax Increment Finance Authority, Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, to fill an unexpired term effective upon confirmation and to expire February 5, 2028.
There is a motion by Councilwoman Baumann, supported by Councilman Hornbuckle. Does the administration have anything they'd like to add?
Sure. Just that Ms. Maxwell's served on boards for the city in the past. She's very active within the community, volunteering her time at numerous events and was most recently named Citizen of the Year by the Westland Wayne, or Westland Livonia Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you Chief of Staff. Is there any comments from the maker? Okay. And anything from the supporter? Councilwoman?
I'll add my two cents in that I think this is, be a great appointment, great work ethics, being involved in the community for a very long time and getting to know people in the community, helping out in the community. The only question I have, maybe for the administration or council, I did notice that her resume was not in the packet. Normally, we get resumes and that question came up quite a few times. Is there a reason why we didn't get a resume with this one?
I wasn't, I believe the resume was sent on to the council president originally. This was going to be on the agenda a couple of meetings ago and it was part of that packet. Why it didn't get included in this packet, I'm not sure.
No, I just ask because a couple of people asked me and, you know, I didn't have the resume to back it up, but I do know she has very great work ethics and be a great addition to the city.
Just Councilwoman, real quick, I didn't catch that it wasn't in the packet, so in the future, I will make sure to make a note that the resume is either always in the packet or if there's, for some reason, the person being appointed doesn't want it in the packet, to make sure that it's included in a separate email so everybody has that. So apologies on that one. Is there any additional discussion from the council? Any additional discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, motion passes. Please stand and be recognized.
New business. Item 3. Nomination of Member to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a Three-Year Term Effective Upon Confirmation and to Expire October 15, 2027. Current Zoning Board Member Adam Goring has submitted a letter requesting consideration for reappointment.
There's a nomination for Adam Goring? There's support by Councilman Hornbuckle?
Doesn't require support.
There's no support on that one. Now, are there any other nominations?
Motion to close nominations.
There's a motion to close nominations by Councilwoman Rakowski. Is there support? Supported by Councilman Hart. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing none, motion passes.
New business. Item 4. Appointment of Member to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a Three-Year Term Effective Upon Confirmation, expiring October 15, 2027. Adam Goring has been nominated.
There's a motion by Councilman Hart and it is supported by Pro Tem Sampi. Does the administration have anything else they'd like to add? Hearing Mr. Goring?
It's a council appointment.
Oh, that's right. Anybody on the council have any discussion or anything they'd like to add? Any discussion? Yes.
I would just like to thank Mr. Goring for applying for reappointment and his continued work on the zoning boards of appeals.
Yes, Pro Tem?
Yeah, I appreciate that. I know that when people are on boards and commissions, all this probably doesn't meet frequently, I think more as needed. We appreciate the commitment and the reappointment process.
Is there any additional discussion? Any additional discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing and hearing none, motion passes unanimously.
New business. Item 5. Approval of Bid for Construction of a Fire Training Structure. Administration recommends the low bidder Forge Firing Company. Total amount not to exceed $592,450, subject to council authorizing the mayor and city clerk to sign the contract approved by the city attorney and executed by the vendor.
There is a motion by Councilwoman Rakowski, supported by Pro Tem Sampi. Is there any discussion from the maker?
Yeah, thank you. So this is another, another one of those items that have been on the docket here for quite some time, or at least in discussion, as we're going into a revitalized Station 2 and a change in the continuing education units that is needed by our firefighters. This will help take off some of the financial, ongoing financial burden of maintaining the proper training for firefighters, because up until this point, in order to get some of the training that this apparatus, this piece of apparatus would provide, we'd have to outsource that. And the requirements have changed, so this is now a necessary component, where before there wasn't as much physical training that needed to happen on a regular annual basis for our firefighters. So while it seems to be a pricey addition, it is actually quite necessary and, you know, if you think you can do it, go ahead. It's quite labor-intensive and, you know, we've all enjoyed the opportunity to have a ride-along, but I don't think any of us have put on 90 pounds of gear and, and actually went up flights of stairs with a, with a hose and, and did, did what they actually do. So this will, you know, I'm counting on you, Council President, to be the first one up.
Oh, boy. Oh, my God.
But.
I'll do it.
There we go. You heard it here, folks, but no, it's necessary because otherwise we would spend, be spending money with other entities. And I think this would allow us, and you can correct me from the fire department if I'm incorrect, to host other communities, to be able to get the necessary training for their firefighters as well.
Through the chair, you are correct.
Thank you so much. Councilwoman Rakowski basically covered most points, but I'm glad to see that this was on our agenda because I know that anytime that we can give training, equipment, support to our first responders, those that are in the community, service the community, to me, this is money well-spent. So I appreciate your patience and I can't wait to see this come to fruition for you.
Thank you Pro Tem. Is there any additional discussion from the council? Any additional discussion? I do have a couple of things. So, one, two, the deputy chief, when other communities come in for training, is that something we're going to be compensated for when they send people in for using our tower or for if, you know, any of our guys are going to be a part of the training process with them?
So we will, we will charge based, fee-based system on what it would cost us to run other communities through. If it is, if we're allowed that, the specific amount of students for the classes that we'd be instructing through the training tower and they would fit inside that or our umbrella, we would probably do them at no cost specifically for our auto aid communities or communities that touch us, that we respond with on a regular basis that we need to train with.
And just so the community knows, too, this is really a first-of-its-kind training facility. Right now, you know, there's some training that goes on, correct, at the North Gate Station, but it really pales in comparison to what this is going to allow us to do, correct?
That is correct.
Great. And then I do have a question of the administration. So we had talked about this, you know, kind of behind the scenes. For those at home watching, when we send out bids in the city, you know, moving forward, we're going to be looking to apply what's called responsible contracting policy to bids that go out. And what responsible contracting is, it's something that myself and my colleague, Councilwoman Rakowski, have been working hand-in-hand on. That is to make a, you know, better, more fair bidding process, not just to go with the low bidder, but to make sure that we're going with the right bidder on a particular, you know, construction-related contract over a certain dollar amount. It won't be every single contract gets over a certain dollar amount. My question of the administration is, RCP is not yet applied to this particular bid, correct?
Through the chair, correct. We went through our normal standard bid selection process and procurement process altogether on this. It was a timing thing based on feedback from the council on the policy before it got rolled out, so that was the main reason.
Okay. And then moving forward, obviously, this is going to be a big project and we'll have, you know, Station 4 coming down the pike as well. You anticipate that we can start applying RCP towards future bids?
Any project over $200,000 from this point forward, absolutely.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any additional discussion? Yes? Councilwoman?
I just want to add that, again, if, I don't know if people are looking into the agenda packets, if the residents are doing that, but there is a sheet in here that speaks about the company we chose to go with. And I just thought it was really impressive to read some of this, that the owner of the company has spent 20 years of experience as a career firefighter and he owns this with, I'm believing, his wife, Carrie Shepherd. So it's just, you know, when we think about a company, we might want to do, I mean, there's some really good things about this company that I just, I mean, I did not delve into this more deeply than what's in the packet, but it is one of those things, I'm like, you know what? You know, these people know what they're, I think they know what they're talking about. I think we're going to get something really good, so I'm excited about it.
Great. Thank you, Councilwoman. Any additional discussion? Any additional discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, motion passes.
New business. Item 6. Approval of Bid for the Supply of Replacement Network Switches. Administration recommends in account TSG. Total amount not to exceed $106,996.34, subject to council authorizing the mayor and city clerk to sign a contract approved by the city attorney and executed by the vendor.
There is a motion by Councilman Hart, supported by Councilman Hornbuckle. Is there any discussion from the maker? Okay. Any discussion from the supporter? Is there any additional discussion from the council? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, motion passes unanimously.
New business. Item 7. Adoption of Prepared Resolution Authorizing the Allocation of American Rescue Plan Act Funds Toward Westland Goodfellows No Child Without a Christmas Event to Be Held December 8, 2024, in an amount not to exceed $10,000.
There's a motion by Councilwoman Rakowski, supported by Councilwoman Baumann. Is there any discussion from the maker?
Okay, so I think we're all familiar with Goodfellows' and No Child Without a Christmas really means. And, you know, every year, our community comes together to make sure the children of our community do have a great Christmas. And I think we also have to recognize that while this, there is a group of people that are the Goodfellows, they have also built some great partnerships, like with our police department and, and other community groups that contribute to this. But when we talk about ARPA funds, some people, you know, really get wound about one-time uses. And this one in particular, I kind of feel like, though it may be underwriting a Christmas, I don't think you can say that a child and a family being able to celebrate Christmas with dignity and grace is a one-time expense. I think it's a priceless opportunity for a family to have something that perhaps wouldn't be realized otherwise. And, you know, we are supposed to be a compassionate city. These dollars were given to us by government after we lost a lot of tax revenue, but we also lost a lot of citizens to the disease that, or the virus that shut, shut people down. And families are still recovering from that. And, you know, I would imagine, especially in the economic climate that we're currently in, that the Goodfellows may have actually more requests this year than they have in the past. And so I find this to be not only worthy, but a priceless endeavor for us to be able to contribute to the joy of that holiday season for those families. Thank you.
Is there any discussion from the supporter? Any additional, yes?
Thank you, Council, for considering this. Probably about two months ago, the Goodfellows organization came to me and said, we are going to be done. There's a group of about four people and they were the individuals that were running it. They said, we need support, we need manpower, we need volunteers. It's very difficult for four people that have been doing it for 15 years, they don't get the support. And they said, can you please step up? You know? You know, you have had this passion for the community forever, Melissa. I said, I don't know how we're going to do it, but we're going to do it. So I stepped up recently. I'm going to abstain on this vote for conflict of interest. I stepped into the co-president role in order to pool resources, support, just basically help them organize, because, again, these are aging individuals that have stepped into the roles of Goodfellows for many, many years, and it's just, I mean, Christmas time, they don't even spend with their own family. So I'm starting to learn why fifteen years of being in this role for them have really beaten them up. I get it. So what I'm going to ask is that we are looking for sponsorships. The ten thousand dollars that would be approved today will help sixty-six families. On average, there's over four hundred children that, during the holiday season, that they, they serve. That's a lot of children. Sixty-six is a very small number of the four hundred. I can tell you right now, applications were just opened up. They were dropped off at Jefferson Barnes on, I think, the fourth, ten a.m. They're already starting to go out. I have inbox messages from individuals saying, please, please, please help us. So if you are a business, you're watching this, you're an individual, you're an organization, you want to adopt a family, we have families that we will get the applications from. Just make sure that they qualify, and we will provide them to you. You go through the wish list, you shop, and then we'll coordinate delivery. So I can't begin to tell you, I know Mr. Barra had talked about all the support that they've gotten, but unfortunately, the support over the years have dwindled. But these are our children, you have to be Westland residents, the children deserve a great Christmas. So what I'm asking is that we, as a community, rally around our children here in Westland. So the police do a fantastic job. The day after Thanksgiving, they host a STUFAS SWAT, or, I don't know if it's SWAT, I think it changes. So they are doing it, I'm assuming, again, this year. I've already talked to the fire department to see if they can help, and I think that chief had said that he would support. But, again, I really, really, really appreciate everyone's support on this. It's taken a lot of time already from me, but I feel it's so important that we, we serve, this is my purpose. I've, I've always done Christmas in some capacity, now I get to do it at a greater level, and I'm going to make sure that we serve our children in Westland. So I hope that anyone that's watching, please contact me if you have resources on funding, donations, you want to take a family. I just find it really important that, that we serve our children during the holiday season, because no child deserves not having a Christmas. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Pro Tem. Is there any additional discussion from the council? Yes, Councilman Wishart.
Where's a good location to donate at?
A good for financial or toys?
Either or.
So toys, we are going to be putting our boxes out at various locations throughout the city. If a business watching wants to have a box, we'd be happy to coordinate that, but fire departments, police department, city hall, we have kind of various businesses that, our credit unions have been amazing throughout the years, too. They have open arms. A lot of people find that it's things that you go to frequently that remind you, like, I'm going to drop off a toy. We've created an Amazon wishlist, so I'd be happy to send it out to everyone in council. But financially, there's an address to the Dorsey Center. We have an office there that we just recently cleaned. If you have anyone that would like to donate, it's a tax deduction, hundred percent, five oh one three C. So I'll make sure to get that to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional discussion from the council? All right, Mr. Cook, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Bowman.
Yes.
Councilman Hart.
Yes.
Councilman Hornbuckle.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
Yes.
Council, Councilman Wishart.
Yes.
Pro Tem Sampi.
Abstain.
President McDermott.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business. Item eight. Adoption of prepared resolution authorizing the allocation of American Rescue Plan Act funds toward the Norwaine Community Citizen Council's annual Harvest Fall Event to be held October nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four, in an amount not to exceed ten thousand dollars.
Support.
There's a motion by Councilman Hart, supported by Councilwoman Rakowski. Is there any discussion from the maker?
No dissent.
Any discussion from the supporter?
Thank you. I think the Norwaine Committee, I'm going to botch the name, and I do it every time, but they know I love them anyway, their represent, representative, Ms. Christina Worm, presidentially recognized Christina Worm, did a great job of explaining what this particular event and all the events that the advisory committee provides to not only the local area surrounding the Jefferson Barnes Community Vitality Center, but it's open to all of the members of Westland and their children. So thank you for being our community's recreation center. And, again, it's about children, and I am in support.
Thank you. Is there any additional discussion from the council? Any additional discussion? Yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to echo, too, thank you, Ms. Worm, for coming and speaking, just everything that is done through the Norwaine Citizens Council. I think a lot of people don't realize the type of events that you offer, and ninety, I mean, I don't think there's any charge for any, anything. I want to say ninety percent of the time, but I don't think I've ever seen a charge for anything. So you embrace the community with open arms, and I really appreciate just you guys being welcoming of, of us that come, that residents, non-residents, you guys really open your arms to everyone. So I definitely will be in support of this. I applaud everyone for Norwaine Citizens Council that volunteers their time and supports all the events that you guys do.
Thank you, Pro Tem. Is there any additional discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing seen none. Motion passes unanimously.
New business. Item nine. Adoption of prepared resolution authorizing the allocation of American Rescue Plan Act funds for the Wayne Ford Civic League's annual Veteran Thanksgiving Meal Program, in an amount not to exceed ten thousand dollars.
Support.
There's a motion by Councilman Hart, supported by Pro Tem Sampi. Is there any discussion from the maker?
Yeah, we'll brief. Council President, you know, President Barr came in, everybody on the dais here, with maybe the exception of Councilman Wishart, has probably been to the veteran meal program so far. Councilman Wishart's new, I'm sure he'll be there this year, but it's a great program. It's been going on for several years, and gets bigger and bigger and bigger, and one of the things we get to see every year is actually how much it's needed, if, if you work that event. So it's important, I encourage my colleagues to please join me in supporting this. This is our, kind of one, our one chance to not only make sure it does happen this year, but try to really make sure it happens in perpetuity. So this will help. So I appreciate and ask you all for your support on this, as we do this worthwhile and notable opportunity. Thank you.
You're welcome. Pro Tem.
Thank you so much. I, I think President Barra of the Wayne Ford Civic League for always supporting this, but I think this is a great event. This will be my fourth year. Probably my favorite thing about this event is when you have the opportunity to do deliveries. There's some veterans that are, are stuck in their home, or they have issues that they can't get out, and the, how do I put this in the nicest way? The approach that you get, the embrace that you get for them is almost emotional for yourself, not even just them, the tears, the joy, the support, and just how, how much it means to them, because in many cases, their family can't be there during the holiday season. So it really is a fantastic opportunity, and I've really looked forward to this year over year. So I'm very, very, very excited that this continues, and I definitely am supporting this.
Thank you, Pro Tem. Any additional discussion from the council? Yes, Councilman Wishart.
I will absolutely be there, passing out meals. I don't think I have much of a choice in this regards, but I'm looking forward to it. Quick reminder, you can Google Wayne Ford Civic League, it's a second link in the Google search, and it brings you right to the donation area. Please make a donation. I, I already did myself, and I hope everyone else does.
Thank you, Councilman. Any additional discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing seen none. Motion passes unanimously. All right, we will now move on to public comment. Everyone wishing to speak before the council shall do so in a civil manner. Speakers shall refrain from abusive or profane remarks, vulgar language, disruptive outbursts, threats, racial slurs, or other conduct that interferes with the orderly conduct of the business meeting. Personal attacks on council members, the administration, city staff, other speakers, or members of the public will not be tolerated. The clock will start upon the first words of the speaker and will not stop while the speaker is recognized from the floor. The speaker can ask questions at this time, and the person questioned may respond during the speaker's allotment of time. However, the clock will not be stopped once it has started. The clock will continue to run for three minutes, is up, or the person is done speaking, whichever comes first. Is there anyone on my left, public comment? Yes, Ms. Dale.
Good evening again, everyone. Ruth Dale. I wanted to speak about the Eloise lecture recently. The light rain didn't deter folks from showing up at the museum complex. There was such a crowd that Jeff Kozlowski, who is the, he's an excellent speaker, he agreed to have two different sessions. We were, I don't know, I think the walls expanded some, and I saw this friendly redhead at the back of the room at the first session wave to me. Thank you, Councilwoman Bowman, for being there. There is such a need for a building of some type there to be able to hold these. This was ridiculous. We were like sardines, especially at the first session, it was something. But he gave an excellent lecture, so thank you to Jeff Kozlowski and to the Historical Commission. Maybe Sharon Sullivan, Brett could come up and speak also on this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Dale. Is there anyone on my right wishing to speak? Yes, Juanita.
Good evening. Juanita Francis Westland, Long Term resident. First, I want to commend the fire department on an awesome lunch we had this weekend. Our five daughters, that was like the ultimate thing every year, and I brought our baby, who's twenty-one now, and we had a good time eating lunch with y'all. And I wasn't able to attend Blue Smoke, but from the pictures, that was an awesome event as usual, so next year, I'll be there. So I am still excited about how exciting Westland is right now. Everything is like amazing. I want to appreciate everybody and for taking us back to the mountain. I, I love the events that's been going on, and it's been bringing out families and communities at large. My still ongoing concern is with our daughter's apartment. She moved out here a couple of months ago, back home. Her apartment had seven mushrooms in it, in the time span of seven, uh, seven days, and this has been going on since early this year. HUD went after Woodcrest apartment, other federal agencies, they've been cited, they do not have a certificate of occupancy, and our daughter moved to small claims, Maja Lewis, she moved to small claims to get back her, her deposit and other legal damages, and then Woodcrest moved to take it to a civil court. So now they're going to impose additional fees on her, which is unfair. She has to get an attorney if it goes to civil court, and to this day, I have not gotten any relief or my daughter or any responses, why the city or anybody that deals with a complex this big, over four hundred units, that does not have a certificate of occupancy, and yet going after tenants who challenged them in court. Truly, this is too long. It's overdue.
No, sure, we certainly understand, and like always, we can stay and talk to you about this afterwards and see what exactly is going on.
We keep talking.
Yeah, no, I mean.
It's no action.
I know. I hear you.
Now she has to go to court and get legal representation for something that should never have happened.
Understood. Yeah, it's obviously a horrible situation, it's been going on for months, so we certainly want action to be taken.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone wishing to speak on my left? Yes, Ms. Worm.
So very quick thank you. Thank you for your support, thank you for your kind words, and thank you for always supporting our events. And so on October nineteenth, from eleven to two, we're going to have some really cute kids dressed in some really cute costumes, who like to be judged and told who's the best. So if any of you would like to come, I know it's a busy time in the city, I know it's very busy on that weekend, but if anyone would like to come from the council to help be quick judges, just a quick in and out, we would greatly appreciate it. So thank you again, you guys, for all your support, we appreciate you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on my right wishing to speak? Yes.
Good evening, council, Deputy Mayor. My name is Ryan. I'm the president of the Westland Historical Society. I just wanted to come here tonight and give a couple of announcements. The second Tuesday of every month is our society meeting. Just so happens, it's tomorrow night, so if anybody in the audience here tonight is available at six-thirty, the meeting will be at the Westland Historical Village. This past Saturday, we had our fifth annual haunted yard sale. According to the vendors, and a lot of the participants, it was a successful event, and they're looking forward to next year. We had over two hundred visitors and thirty vendors, and a surprise visit by Mayor Coleman. So thank you for that, and I believe this was his first time at Parentsville School. Upcoming events on the twenty-fifth of this month is our annual adult ghost hunt. If anybody's of interest in that, tickets are available on Eventbrite, and you can get the tickets through our Facebook page as well. We do have an event on the nineteenth, but I'll let Derek explain that one, if he's willing to come up later. And as always, we are always looking for volunteers to help with cleaning, gardening, decorating for the holidays, whatever, whatever you can do, even if it's stuffing envelopes or filing, we would appreciate any help that you can give. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on my left? Yes, Ms. Maxwell.
Hello, good evening. So the Westland Democratic Club is having a bowling fundraiser on Saturday, November thirtieth, from twelve P.M. to three P.M. at Westland Bowl, which is five-nine-four-zero North Wayne Road, right by the Red Lobster. The tickets are twenty-five dollars, which includes two games, shoe rental, two slices of pizza, and pop. If you want tickets, you can see myself, Lakeisha Maxwell, Donna Warren, or Ruby. Don't have the tickets yet, we'll have them next week. I just wanted to make that announcement. And the second one is the Thressen Floor Church, which is actually located in Farmington Hills, is hosting a first annual winter coat drive for kids here in Westland, on Saturday, November the second, from eleven a.m. to three P.M. No registration required. The address is Studio two-seven-two-four, South New Bird Road, and the kids' coat size are five to eighteen, and small, medium, large. If anyone has any questions, you can contact Lakeisha Jennings, and her phone number is Okay, that's it. Oh, question, you got a question?
Yeah, can you say, I'm sorry, maybe I was, I was writing notes down.
Okay, sorry.
You said it's a coat drive for kids in Westland, but what was the church again?
It's called Thressen Floor Church. So they're not located here in Westland, but they decided to have it hosted here in Westland, and so they asked if I would share the information.
Gotcha.
So they're doing it for kids here in West, which I think is great, they're doing it here, but it's new coats for kids, but the name of the church is Thressen Floor Church. And it's in Farmington Hills, though.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Maxwell. Anyone else on my right? Anyone on my left? Yes, Derek.
Ryan is correct. We do have an event on the nineteenth that happens conveniently right after the Fall Festival in Norwaine, so when you're done with that, you can come over to the Westland Historic Village Park for- for a Not So Scary Halloween. So it'll be this wonderful opportunity to see the Historic Village Park in a new light. It's going to be an interactive kind of show with all sorts of wonderful things that you may not normally see. The park will be open during 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. on the 19th. There's going to be storytelling. And then after the story itself, there'll be an opportunity for kids to paint pumpkins as well as have some cider and donuts. Again, this is just a wonderful opportunity for folks in Westland to come out and kind of see the park for what it is. As I'm sure all of you know, the park has been around for quite a while and has some wonderful, wonderful things to offer. So I encourage everybody to come down again on October the 19th from 4:00 until 6:00 for our Not So Scary Halloween. We are also looking for volunteers. And so if anybody's interested, they can contact us at WHVP@66@gmail.com. That's WHVP66@gmail.com. Thank you.
Thank you, Derek. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak? Yes, Mr. Warren.
Okay. Now that Council supported the resolution in regards to support the injunction to support the fight of the radioactive materials, I'd like to hear some ideas from Council where they wanted to go. Since you supported the resolution, give me some ideas of what city, whose backyard, where you want to place this stuff. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak? Anyone else in the audience? Seeing and hearing none, we will close public comment and we will move on to comments from the administration.
Thanks. Good evening. I hope everyone had a great weekend this weekend. The weather sure cooperated with us, so. Thank you, City Council, for approving Mayor Coleman's appointment of Lakeisha Maxwell to the Tifa Board and Timothy Bailey to the Westland Library Board. Last week was the first week of the new bulk pickup program. And Mayor Coleman and I have received a lot of calls and positive feedback about the new program. And the program allows residents to place their bulk items at the curb on their recycling week without calling to schedule for a special pickup. So we've already, like I said, we've already received a lot of positive feedback on the program, making it much simpler for residents to get rid of those bulk items. Last week, we also began the program of providing yard waste bags to homeowners. Two packets per household, please. Residents can pick up the bags here at City Hall and we've already given away thousands of bags. So that program seems to be successful as well. Our Halloween decorating contest has officially kicked off and will run until midnight, October 31st. Residents are invited to show off their creativity by nominating themselves or a friend for a chance to win one or more of the, in one or more of the following categories. Best autumn display, best spooky display and most over the top display. To enter, simply submit your nomination online at www.CityofWestland.com and include a photo of the decorated home. Winners will be recognized at the Westland City Council meeting on Monday, November 18th. And those who don't win will still receive a certificate that'll be mailed to them. City offices, including the Recycling Center and the 18th District Court, will be closed on Monday, October 14th in observance of Columbus Day, Indigenous Peoples' Day. Garbage pickup will not be affected. We had some great events over the past couple of weeks. Thank you to everyone that organized, attended and participated in the Fire Station 2 groundbreaking ceremony. And congratulations to the fire department on the success of the fire prevention lunch that was held on Saturday. We still have more events coming up. The farmer's market, the final farmer's market will be held on this Thursday, October 10th. It was a great season for the farmer's market and you still have one more opportunity to make it there. The Westland Library will be hosting a shred day at the 18th District Court parking lot on Saturday, October 12th, from noon to 2:00 p.m. We ask that people please enter from Carlson. This event is for Westland residents only. So you'll need to have a valid ID or a library card in order to drop off. Residents can bring up to five boxes of paper documents to be shredded. And please, no plastic bags with the papers. October 19th is the Harvest Festival at Jefferson Barnes Community Vitality Center. You can stop by for the free family fun, including pumpkin painting, pony rides, live music, trick or treating, cider, donuts and much more. DTE will be hosting a community engagement open house at the Westland Friendship Center on Tuesday, October 22nd, from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. This is a great opportunity for our residents to engage directly with DTE representatives and to ask questions about DTE services and voice your concerns, if you have any, about DTE or to DTE directly. Mayor Coleman would like to invite you to the trunk or treat event at the 18th District Court on Wednesday, October 23rd, starting at 5:30 p.m. Stop by the court parking lot located at 36675 Ford Road for an evening of Halloween fun. Kids 12 and under are invited to dress up in their favorite costumes and enjoy trick or treating from creatively decorated car trunks. The rain date for this event will be Thursday, October 24th. And finally, I'd like to just congratulate Primary Care Plus on their grand opening. We wish them a lot of success. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Any comments from the City Attorney's Office?
Nothing from the City Attorney's Office.
Okay. Thank you, Attorney McNamara. We will now begin council comments with Councilman Hornbuckle.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you, everyone, for coming. I want to start off by talking about October. As most people know or don't know, October is Cyber Security Awareness Month. And I put a couple of tips together to, you know, help you be more safe and protect yourself against this fight against cybersecurity. So one thing I have here is use strong password, unique. Don't use the same password for every single account or login that you use. Enable two-factor authentication or multi-factor. It's the extra layer of security to protect you, not just using one password. You use a password in your device. Make sure you update and update your software regularly. It's very important to keep those patches. I know they're annoying, pop-ups saying, "Update this, update this." But it's important that you update those things. This time of the year is election. Be aware of phishing scams, email, texts, phone calls. Be extra vigilant on making sure you just don't click or respond to just anything that comes, come your way. One of the ones that I think is very important, back up your data. Make sure you keep a backup. When all else fail, you have a backup to restore from. Limit your, the information you provide online. That's especially go for those people that likes Facebook. Facebook always changed their security policies. You should go in there every blue moon and just check to see if the security privacies are the way you like them because they're always changing. And most importantly is to monitor your bank account and your credit card statement. Just don't wait till the statement come in the mail. Go online, check them regularly. Just make sure everything looks legit, like they should be. And hopefully this helps one person to be better against cybercrime. Thank you. Also, October is Halloween, the month of the spookies, as my sons say. So if you go to Councilman Delain O'Hornbuckle, we are putting together all the free events around town, so you can go every week. It's updated regularly. We looking for any Halloween events that's free to our residents to make sure you can maximize those precious moments with your kids. We also asking that take pictures with your kids and also tag me so I can see all the spookies in our city. Last thing I have is go Tigers and I'll see you in two weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. We will now hear from Councilwoman Rakowski.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for that information. I think it'll be really helpful with the cybersecurity. I think everybody can kind of notice up here that we're all wearing either our pink ribbons or beautiful shade of pink and that's, the ribbons always come to us from the Chair of the Western Wayne Relay for Life, Maryam Katie. But I think we all know that this pink ribbon stands for breast cancer awareness and October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. So I'd like to thank my colleagues for continuing to represent the men and women that have to fight this terrible disease. And I really, I know I personally look forward to the day when we don't have to wear pink ribbons and we don't have to remember people. We can celebrate our survivors. And, you know, that's something near and dear to my heart. It's hit my family. I think it's hit more people's families than not. So the key to surviving and being a survivor is early detection. Go get your mammograms, ladies. If you need rides, there's lots of services. There's lots of, you know, low-cost opportunities. Your insurance should cover it without any charge. It's preventative care and it can save your life. October is also Bullying Prevention Month. And as an educator, I think it's really important to highlight how many of our children are falling victim to bullying and how many unfortunate events happen because of bullying. We're not very collectively old up here on the dais, but even when we were in our formative years or in our school years, you couldn't get ahold of us 24 hours a day like children have access to the internet these days. So there is no safe harbor. Please try to make your home the safe harbor for your children. And that also means to not bully your own children and to teach your children how to be kind, how to be strong, what's right and what's wrong. Because along with that access to your children, your children have access to things that can make your life change forever. Because we have heard too many stories of young children taking their own lives because of the relentless bullying that occurs. And I really, I just really plead to the parents that your children really are a reflection in many ways of the care and love you surround your child with or not, the kindness you give your child or not. And, you know, I know things are hard and tough and scary and, but your children need to be able to come to you and talk to you. You need to be their safe harbor. You need to protect them. You have to give them love and compassion. Too many times I'm hearing from my own students that, well, my dad's on the phone or my mom's too busy to hear me. Your phone will always be there, your child will be their age today. So I think it's just really important as adult people that we recognize the impact that it has to our children. And I think it's really the adults in the world that are doing the worst job of not being bullies. So with that, I'm just going to ask you to be kind, use compassion, empathy and love. I'll see you in a couple of weeks. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilwoman. We will now hear from Councilman Wishart.
Thank you, Council President. I'll make it short and sweet. While I cannot volunteer during Christmas time for the Goodfellows because I will have a newborn there at my house, I'll definitely be looking forward to helping out with this program. It's definitely something that I benefited from as a child myself. So I will be looking forward to helping you guys out. That's all I got.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Congratulations.
Well, my wife won't let us know the gender, unfortunately.
Oh, no.
So we're still calling it that. Yeah, congratulations, absolutely. And good luck with the sleep habits. So get a lot of sleep. Now, you got a pregame sleep, I guess, from what I hear. I don't have kids.
I'm just going to live on five hours. It's okay.
There you go. We will now hear from Councilman Hart.
Thank you, Council President. I, too, will be brief, two things. Yes, October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. We do see the pink ribbons. Because of all of this advocacy we've been doing over the years, that's why breast cancer has gone from, quite frankly, a much higher mortality rate to much lower. And we've all been touched by it. My colleague said that and we've all been, you know, faced with it at one time or the other. For those who don't know, Linda, my wife, she got it when she was 30. Perfect health, everything else. I was more likely to get it than her if you look at, you know, health and history. But so, but we beat it. She's a survivor and we continue to go ahead and advocate for it. So it's all the support and supporting Breast Cancer Awareness Month that continues to help us get closer and closer to winning the battle. So thanks for supporting the pink ribbon. Lastly, I'll answer Mr. Warren's question because I thought about this. I had some options here. So where are we going to, where are we going to send it? Well, A, let's leave it where the hell it's at. How's that sound? Two, well, this is a crazy idea. Oh, send it back to Los Alamos, you know? And I said, well, that's not where they made it. That's only where they collected it, put it together. And I think if you haven't been to New Mexico now, Los Alamos is a very high-end kind of area now with a lot of scientists. So I think they're going to push back on that. So then we said, well, back to where it was refined. Well, there's another problem. It was refined in a lot of different places across the country to hide it from the enemy. So it was refined in so many little tiny spots and it was collected all back again in Los Alamos. So that's not going to work. So then I remembered, well, why don't we just send it to where the heck the places that was created to hold it to begin with? And there is a waste, there's a nuclear waste isolation facility 33 miles outside of Carlsbad, New Mexico. That's what it's for. It was built for that purpose and that's why it's there. And if it's full, then the federal government needs to get on there, along with the Department of Energy, and continue to expand it and make it bigger. That's where that stuff should go. That's what that place was built for. They were going to build another one called the Yucca Mountain Complex that was much larger years ago, but they found that geologically the ground wouldn't support it. But the isolation facility in Carlsbad, southeast of Carlsbad, was made for that. So that's where that should go, in my opinion. Council President, thank you. Nothing else.
Thank you, Councilman. We will now hear from Councilwoman Bowman.
Thank you. I'm just going to add on to what Councilman Hart mentioned because I actually did a quick search because I do those things when people ask some certain questions, just because I'm curious, see what's out there. And I have not vetted any of this, but the chemical and engineering news from 2020 actually has a, has a thing, "As nuclear waste piles up, scientists seek the best long-term storage solutions." And one thing they talk about is actually turning it into glass, although that's not, it's a temporarily longer term. So it's an interesting article if anyone wants to read it, but you know, we do obviously need to, as a nation, figure this out because, yes, we can't keep, you know, saying, "Not my backyard," or we can, but someone is not going to be able to, someone else is not going to be able to say that. So anyway, with that, I did want to, I found out today that, I don't know if anyone knows, but the former mayor of Livonia, Dennis Wright, passed away last week. And that one, I know it's not, I know it's not Westland, but it affected me because when I started my foyer into helping candidates and helping in the political, the local politics, he was one of the first people I actually was able to sit down and talk to. And he really gave me a really great insight on what it meant to be, in his case, the people's mayor and what it meant to be, you know, for the people. He was a long-term, longtime business owner in Livonia with Wright Hardware. And then he, his dream was to be mayor. And he was only able to serve one term due to Parkinson's. But, yeah, he was, it was, it just, I just caught it today, just today, like literally just a couple of hours ago, that he had passed away. And they don't have any arrangements yet that I've seen and things like that, but I've done a lot of things with him, with a lot of the fundraisers and the Symphony Orchestra and things like that, while he was there. And it just, he was a big part. He's, you know, he was a really great person to talk to as far as really understanding like what it, what it means to serve your community because he served in many ways even before he was mayor. And it was just, I remember, I still remember the conversation, just having this, like, it was like one-on-one. It was just really nice. So anyway, I just. So anyway, I just want to recognize that, that was a, you know, he was only 72. So I want to talk about that. I do want to just mention a little bit about, I supported the reasons, the three items we had on our agenda for using ARPA funds. I do want to share that we're, you know, we've been in some meetings and I know, I'm newer at this, obviously because I'm new on council for a year. So there's been a lot, so ARPA, the ARPA money started coming in years ago, so long before I was actually on council. But I did raise up concerns with, as I know my, my one colleague mentioned, you know, the larger things, like I just, what my concern with ARPA money right now, and I've expressed this to my colleagues, is the nickel and diming. And while I definitely support helping causes, helping these great opportunities, I do want to recognize that we have, we, it's been a long conversation, not just for me, but for mothers and others too, that if we nickel and dime the ARPA money, it just goes away and do we have something long-term from it? So there are multiple facets. If you look under, if you actually do the research on the ARPA money, there's actually multiple areas and they do recommend something that has a long-term effect and benefit to the community. So, so obviously, yes, we can address some of these things and say, "Well, this does give us a long-term effect," or "This does." But there is something to be thinking about and, you know, I know, I appreciate the work that our, my colleagues have done as far as the ARPA committee, but I just think it's something I want the citizen, the residents to know that, you know, we do need to kind of like figure something out that's going to make this somewhat of a, you know, visible thing that says, "Hey, this is what the ARPA money did to make a difference to the community." And, you know, I think about even just, not that it has to be a plaque or whatever, but just something that really recognizes that and acknowledges that this was a tough, the COVID time, 2020, 20, you know, the multiple years was a tough time for everybody. And we do want to say that, hey, that we were able to do something, that this for our community. And maybe it's multiple things. Maybe it's a list, you know, I'm just, you know, now I'm just, you know, all these ideas coming. Maybe it's a multiple list of saying, "Hey, this is what our money, our ARPA money did and we do have something that says, 'This is all that it did.'" I don't know. It just, I just feel like it's just, people need to know in 10, in five years, what we did, 10 years, and what we did with this money and how we were good fiduciary distributors of, decision-makers of that. So I just want to kind of make that reference. I am going to say, since I didn't do it last time, but I'm going to say, I'm going to say happy anniversary to my husband. We did just celebrate 28 years on Saturday. We weren't together. I was actually at the Blue Smoke event. He was fishing and I was at the Blue Smoke event. So we were not together on our anniversary, but it was 28 years. We've been married. So that was actually, it's a pretty interesting, neat milestone to kind of think, "Wow. I didn't even think I was that old." Just joking. And let's see, trying to think if there's anything else I was going to mention on this. I think that's about it. Thank you and I will look forward to seeing everybody in two weeks.
Thank you, Councilwoman Pro Tem Sandy.
Thank you. Thank you, Council President. Thank you, everybody. So I wanted to first start out by say, "Go Tigers." We are a big baseball family and I was running a few minutes later than I wanted to be here. My son and his friends, we were just drawn to the TV. So the Tigers did win three to zero, so now it's a 1-1 series, which is pretty exciting. So I hope they go all the way. I do. I love October. I love the postseason baseball. Again, I'm just a huge baseball fan. Wanted to congratulate those appointed to boards tonight. I know we had quite a few appointments and reappointments. Congratulations and thank you for your service. We appreciate you. Wanted to also thank my colleagues again for the support on Goodfellows. Thank you for asking your meaningful questions too. So like I said, I jumped into this probably very quickly, knowing that there's children involved, but I couldn't say no. So if you see any families, I look at the police in the room that might need some assistance, send them our way. So applications, like I said, are at Jefferson Barnes. I know you guys are out in the community, so you may interact with some people that may not have access to computers or social media as frequently, but they do have a Facebook page that I've been monitoring. It's the Westland Goodfellows, trying to update information there. The website's under construction. We've done some recent updates, but there's a lot of good that's done in the community. So I wanted to, like I said, thank my colleagues and any businesses that can help support our children. I would appreciate you sending them my way. Okay, so now I'll jump in really quick and talk about breast cancer as well too. So you'll notice I am wearing my pink. My grandmother I lost in 1991 to breast cancer and my husband's grandmother, we lost, I can't remember the year, I think 2009, if I'm not mistaken. So I'm a huge supporter of making sure that you do get your mammogram. So I, this will be my third time getting a mammogram. I booked it later in the month, so I purpose, purposeful to have it during this month, but also to remind me too during Breast Cancer Awareness Month that as a woman, I know early prevention is the key. So any women out there, don't, don't, don't wait. If you are able to get your mammogram, get your mammogram. Very important. Wanted to congratulate everyone involved in the new fire station groundbreaking. That was a great day. I was so honored to be there. So exciting. I am hoping that the bridge, as we talked about, doesn't delay anything, but, you know, we joked, we're like, "I think the fire station's going to be done before the bridge." But again, I mean, we, we had a great day and I know it was a, probably a momentous occasion for all the firefighters. I'm looking down at you. I know that you guys are just probably so overwhelmed and excited. And moving admin there too. So I know that there was a lot of questions about the administration. I know Mitch, you're in the administration, but they're moving administration in the new build of the new fire station too. So the cool thing is, is we're going to have a new fire station too. We're also moving administration over and it's going to be a training hub. So there's going to be a lot of things going on in that area, which is pretty exciting because I always mean, if we're building, there's possible movement, hopefully, like I said, when the bridge opens, of new businesses. So there's that strip mall that, that has been occupied for quite some time. So I know that it brings a lot of traffic that way. Okay, I know that the Chief of Staff mentioned about all the events going on. One thing that was missed is the prioritizing everyone's mental health lunchtime conversation. So this event is happening on October 10th. I was hoping to see Ray here because he was so excited, so I wanted to give him that plug. October 10th, they are doing, the DEI department is doing another luncheon. Administration is free, I'm sorry, administration, admission is free. They want you to go through the process though, because they want to know how many people are going to be attending. So 11:30, Nicole Jones, you can call her if you want to attend, 734-793-9342. And again, this is talking about mental health. So they're going to have a panel of individuals and Ray Schuholtz is going to be on the panel. So bummed I didn't see him today. There's also coffee at the courthouse, so that's going to be exciting. The Chamber is putting on a coffee at the courthouse event on Friday, October 18th, from 7:30 to 8:45. I know that the Harvest Festival has been talked about a dozen times, so that's exciting. I'm going to bring my grandbaby out there. It'll be his first event, first community event. The DE, the DTE will be there. I'm hoping that my colleagues will be there too. The open house, I haven't seen it promoted a lot on the social for the cities page, so hopefully we can get that out there because I know that that's Tuesday, October 22nd. Maybe they're not promoting it because they know it's going to be wildly attended. But we'll definitely be there because that's going to be an event that's going to allow our residents to ask questions, engage, bring your bill, whatever you wanted, concerns, questions. It's going to be great. So Friendship Center on the 22nd, 4 to 7 p.m. We already covered the trunk-or-treat, so that's, that's definitely something that is going to be a fun time. And then there's a couple of things that got brought up I wanted to make sure that we addressed. I just kind of whispered over to Council President, Ms. Francis is not here, but we've been working on this issue for quite some time, myself and Council President's been round and round and I apologize and I'll apologize to her separately. I know that our building, planning director was working on it. We got to figure out what's going on with the certificate of occupancy. That would be something that our administration would have to jump in. It has not been fixed, but horrible situation. She's been dealing with so much, so we'll figure out what's going on with that for sure. And then thank you, everyone that spoke about the Westland Historic Society. You guys have some great things going on. Thank you for plugging that too, because some of these things I didn't know about the 19th, you guys are doing your Historic Park Pumpkin Donuts Not So Scary event, so that's great. Thank you. Share that please with all of us. We'll make sure to share it on our social too. That's, it's perfect timing so they can leave one event and go to another. And then I know it's brought up about the ARPA spending. I think Council President and myself are going to probably recap everything, but we've recently invested in majority of our parks, 1.25 million dollars. We supported our seniors with PBM. We did some vehicle pull-throughs and some other meaningful things, but we'll make sure to recap it. There's been a lot of large purchases, but I think that the community would benefit by knowing what we've, what we've spent. So we'll make sure to do that for sure, just so everyone is on, on board and understands what we're doing. So one last thing, a few weeks ago, Don Nicholson presented some tax cards to the Police Department and the Fire Department. He wanted me to remind everyone, if you need more or if there's any questions or anything, feel free to reach out to him. Hopefully that was a meaningful contribution. I know that it was something that he put out. Oh, you have it? Love it. Love it. I have mine too in my car. But he is getting a lot of, a lot of feedback from other stations, a lot of fire stations and police stations outside of Michigan too. So it must've went viral, which is awesome, but he is very excited if you guys need more. He said, "No charge. He'll make sure to take care of you guys." So to recap our next meeting, the 21st of October at 7:00. As, as we all say, be safe and kind with each other, but we will see you in two weeks and thank you, Councilwoman, for bringing that up about bullying too. So I know that's heavy on our heart and I always remind people to be kind because you never know what people are dealing with. Thank you.
Thank you, Pro Tem. As the Pro Tem mentioned, we will, I'll work on getting a list of all of our ARPA expenditures so we'll have it at the next meeting to just kind of talk about and just discuss where your ARPA tax dollars ultimately have gone. And then hopefully here in the very near future, because we do have a very tight deadline with that, we'll have some exciting decisions regarding the remaining ARPA dollars that the Subcommittee has brought up as well. So I will hopefully have that for the next meeting. I just want to revisit something that we passed at the last meeting and is going to be coming up and it was mentioned by the Deputy Mayor, Indigenous Peoples' Day will be coming up. And again, I just want to thank my colleagues for adopting that Indigenous Peoples' Day resolution. It was brought up earlier by Director Barr at the Wayne Ford Civic League. I want to thank him, but also two of my colleagues, Councilwoman Rakowski and Councilman Hart, who've been integral in planning and carrying out the Veterans Holiday Meal Program each and every year. This is something that, as Director Barr mentioned, has been going on for a decade now and I know that they've been integral in getting it going each year too and doing a lot of the shopping and behind-the-scenes work that you don't see. We, you know, a lot of us on council will come and members of the community to actually pack the boxes, but to get all the stuff, to shop for it all, I know they do a lot of the prep work there, so thank you for that. With regards to the Blue Smoke event, it was another terrific event this year. I had the chance to spend several hours at the Blue Smoke over at the Hennig Center. This is something that, well, it's the second annual Blue Smoke. They've been doing the TRU or the Blue Smoke fundraiser for quite some time. So to Sergeant Capodra and the team that puts it on, they always do a fantastic job. Always excited and happy to be there to support our Westland Police Department. I'm a big sports guy. Didn't win any of the silent auctions this year, but they have a lot of great memorabilia. They had an incredible, the Lions throwback helmet that they wore last year, the blue helmet with the old throwback logo. I bid on it, but so did about 15 other people. So unfortunately, I was not the lucky winner on that one. But they have a lot of great memorabilia, a lot of great prizes and it goes to support our Westland Police Department. So great job, as always, on this. Another thing that I wanted to commend our PD on is if you follow the news, unfortunately, we were in the news for some not-so-good stuff and I think it's important when that happens to acknowledge the bad, but highlight the good. If you were at the John Glenn football game or if you watched the news, there was a really unfortunate event where some individuals who were not even spectators at the game showed up afterwards and caused some trouble, unfortunately, and misbehaved, to say the least, at the John Glenn football game. But thankfully, we have a great police force here who stepped in and took quick action to resolve the fight and, you know, break it up. And to the folks who came to start the game, to start a fight after the game, shame on you. Because that football game, homecoming was there to honor the kids. It is about the kids who are playing the game, the band and the crowd. I was a band kid in high school. I sat there at football games when I was a band kid. And to those who caused trouble and took away from the game, took away from the experience for the kids on the field, for the band kids, the parents and people who just showed up to enjoy the football game, shame on you and be better, please. But thank you again, though, goes out to our Westland PD for their quick action in resolving that situation and for not allowing it to get more out of control than it ended up getting. I appreciate their bravery and swift action. As all of my colleagues mentioned, it is Breast Cancer Awareness Month and I will add on, in the wealthiest nation on earth, healthcare should be a guaranteed human right and no one should go without it. Just a couple of other things. My colleague already mentioned about Ms. Francis's issue. We will be following up on that to take some action. Thank you to Ms. Maxwell, Mr. Bailey for stepping up and continuing to serve in the community and being a newly-appointed member on our library board. So we appreciate your service on the community. With that, I, oh, I did want to commend Mayor Coleman and the administration on a wonderful State of the City address. I had the chance to attend that. It was a very nice State of the City and I thought he did a great job in his first speech at the State of the City. So thank you for including us on that and job well done. And with that, if anybody needs, oh, I do have one more thing, sorry, before I get to that. I wanted to thank the Fire Department as well on your fire awareness and prevention event. I've had the chance to attend that here for a couple of years running and they always do a great job in educating the community with the smoke detection, smoke alarm, stand-by-your pan campaign and just having, you know, a good time with the bounce houses, the free food and opening up the fire trucks and the rescues for the kids to climb on and get the firsthand experience there. With that, if anybody needs anything, you can reach out to me on my Facebook page at Councilman Mike McDromit, or you can give me a call or send me a text at 734-890-2146. Go Tigers! And is there a motion to adjourn?